Order for this February 22nd. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell and second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any additions to that or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any citizens to be heard?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And we have the approval of the payment bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Jenna. The approval of the agenda, I think we're on to the payment of the bills and vouchers. We have a motion by Dave and a second by Jenna. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we got the approval of the minutes from February the 8th.
Remove approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Campbell and second by Commissioner Ebinger. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we got our weekly update from our Public Health Director Kathy McKay. She should be ready by now. Good morning, Kathy. Hope you got good news today.
Thank you. I don't have my two compadres with me due to the weather, so sorry you have to put up with just me.
Yeah, we're sorry too.
Apologize for that.
I didn't say that. Okay, go ahead.
I didn't hear a thing.
Strike that from the record.
Okay, I'm trying to, here we go, from the beginning. From the beginning, okay, here are the weekly numbers and you can see in Clay County, we're still seeing a decline which is great, so from the 6th through the 12th, that was 251. New cases and then the 13th through the 19th, so far it's 134. And again, just a reminder, it takes a while for all of the numbers to come in. So that's a preliminary number, but still looking promising. Minnesota is 14,679 new cases, that was the 6th through the 12th. And now it's 3,775. Again, a preliminary number because not all the cases are in. So that's the 13th through the 19th. And we had the weekend and of course Monday as a holiday, so it takes a little while for them to catch up with those numbers. Cass County numbers are also on the decline, 1,070 from the 5th through the 11th. And now 501 from the 12th through the 18th. And North Dakota has 4,643 and then now this week, the 12th through the 18th was 2,379. So everything is declining so far. Our reinfection rates up just a little bit, 894 in Clay County, 57,000, little over 57,000 in Minnesota and a little over 12,000 in North Dakota. And the reinfection now is if they test positive for COVID more than 90 days after a previous lab confirmed infection. The weekly cases by date of tests, so these were from October 21 through February 13th. And so you can see we had the real large increase in cases at 1541. That was in January, beginning of January, and now we're seeing the decline in cases.
Well, if these preliminary numbers are right or real close, that's a good sign anyway.
Yeah, the preliminary numbers are, yeah, that's a good sign. Hopefully that will prove true when they get all of the cases in their system. And these are the weekly Clay County cases. This is starting from March of 2020, so it's just showing the four waves, the epic curve of throughout the pandemics. You can see, you know, the huge increase back in January, but now the decline, hopefully that will continue. Accumulative cases by age, so 19,356 total cases for Clay County. And again, the highest age range that we've been seeing is the 20 to 24-year-olds. These are cumulative cases, so 2,152 in that age group. This is the CDC level of community transmission. This has been all read for quite a long time. Now we see a couple of counties that are in the moderate range, one that is in a substantial and one that is actually in the low range. The rest of the state is still considered high transmission. Total deaths for Clay County, 119, so we did have another death that was reported unfortunately. So died from, and this is a COVID death, so that's one additional from our last report. Here's the new hospitalization admissions per week, and this is throughout the pandemic. So we've had nine new admissions so far this last week. And again, as the data catches up, we'll see this, it's a little bit lagging for hospitalizations. So we had eight admissions of the previous week and now we're showing nine, but still it's not a real large increase. Our hospital capacity in Fargo, so you can see there's six staffed ICU beds available at Essentia, five at Sanford, one at the VA. And then the inpatient beds, 11 at Essentia, 12 at Sanford. Statewide, we have 22 adult ICU beds and four available pediatric beds. So we're not seeing a real huge impact as the CMOs have communicated with us that everything has been manageable. They're seeing the numbers of acute incidences of things that are different other than COVID. Hospitalization data, so you can see total hospitalized currently is 97. Non-ICU is 80 and 17 in ICU. So that 97 was down from last week, it was 120. And ICU 17 was the same as last week, five pediatric admissions currently.
Just a minute, I guess I haven't been watching, is there any questions so far? Okay, okay.
Thank you. Statewide vaccine data, so this is for ages 5 plus. So again, as we've reported, the state, 74.3% of people that had at least one vaccine dose, almost 70 of the completed vaccine series, so we're in a good spot there. Booster doses, on the other hand, we're seeing less than 50% that, even across the U.S., of people getting their booster doses. So we're really still trying to encourage people to make sure they get that booster dose. Over 2.1 million boosters and third doses have been given statewide in Minnesota so far.
Have you got anything further on that? I've been hearing stuff about a fourth booster, is that coming or?
You know, they're still doing research and studies on that, so nothing official yet. But they're looking at what that might, what they might need for the fourth booster dose and how that will impact with the variant strains that are around. So not anything official yet on that.
Okay.
Our vaccine doses administered per week, so we're at 19,256. So you can see this started from January of '21 through current. Last week, we gave 15 doses, so we're really not seeing a large number of people coming in for vaccine doses. There's plenty of opportunities for people to get their vaccine. So we're just seeing, we're still offering it every week, but we're seeing less people coming to our site. The week of the 14th through the 18th, so this is the 15 doses, we had two first doses, five second doses, five third doses or boosters. And then we had three second dose pediatric doses. So that's what we administered last week. Still a low number, we're in our clinic area in the Family Service Center building because we're not seeing the large numbers anymore. So we're able to manage that through our public health clinic. And our vaccine clinic, so this week, Wednesday, the 23rd, tomorrow, we're going to do 11 to 1, that's the 12 plus. So we have Moderna for second and booster doses and Pfizer for second and booster doses for 12 plus. And then from 3 to 5, we'll do the ages 5 plus. So the Pfizer first and second doses for the 5 to 11-year-olds. And then Moderna for second and booster doses. And Pfizer for second and booster doses for 12 plus. And the information is on our website as well, there's a number you can call for information, 299-7204. We don't have any more Johnson &amp; Johnson, that's not been available for a while. So we're just administering the Moderna and Pfizer.
The Johnson &amp; Johnson, what, they quit making it or they just?
It's just not in, it's not in a good supply. And if we order it, we have to order such a large quantity, we wouldn't be able to even get rid of half of it. So we're not using that one at all. This is the vault testing site, so the positivity rate. And you can also see on the vault testing activity sheet that I handed out as well. But there's 104,424 tests administered and our positivity rate is going down as well. So the week of February 6th, it's 14.45%. So that's good news also that the numbers of positives are going down. And so the reference to the testing, vault testing site, the week of January 30th, we're at 19% positivity rate, so February 6th. And we're always lagging a couple of weeks with this, the data that they can provide us. And so this February 6th is 14.45% positivity rate. We're anticipating that will decline as well. Any questions? I went through that pretty fast.
Any questions? Okay, we got, go ahead.
I always have a question. I noticed that the pediatric hospitalizations ticked up a tiny bit. And I'm curious, since I know you meet with the schools regularly, if they will be tracking, since they eliminated their mask mandate for the schools, if their numbers will increase or decrease and what kind of conversations they're having around that.
Yeah, we didn't have a superintendent meeting last week because of many conflicts. So Thursday is our meeting, so hopefully we'll, that's a good point, we'll discuss that, Commissioner Kaylee, on our next meeting, which will be this Thursday. So that'll be a good discussion for us.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. You're on the next one there too? You want to go on with the introduction or? Or if you got some more, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. You got some more stuff there?
No, I'm, nope, I'm done. Except for the next item, right, is that what you meant?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Next agenda item.
Okay, so is Sarah on the team?
Sarah, we had Sarah on before, I think.
Yeah, she was on before, did we lose her?
I can still see you.
You can see us, but we can't see you? Oh, shoot, Sarah, we can't see you, but you can hear us.
You can stand up or something.
We're all black. Oh, is it because of this? Oh, I'm sorry, it was me, sorry, Sarah. I cut you out, there we go. Okay, thank you. Okay, so I wanted to introduce Sarah. She's been part of our Public Health Department for a while, but we hired her for our diversity, inclusion and equity coordinator for public health. She previously has done some health promotion work in our department, has been working with tobacco prevention, working with college kids for building awareness, engagement and support for public policy, particularly with our tobacco work. She has a bachelor's in healthcare administration and a master's in business administration. Now Sarah, stop me or correct me if I'm saying anything incorrect. She's previously worked as a person in diversity, equity and inclusion. She works, she's been working eight and a half years with Carism, which is Neighborhood Resource Centers, that's after-school programs for at-risk youth and on-the-job skills training for adults, partners with agencies like WIC, Great Plains Food Bank, critical services to a 52-block neighborhood. She teaches at the college level, courses on diversity, equity and inclusion. In the workplace for Rasmus in college, helped them develop a course in 2020 for that. She also is educational content developer for a consulting organization that works with diversity, equity and inclusion. And she's a state field rep for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, North Dakota chapter. How was that, Sarah? Did I cover everything that you do?
Yes, you get all the bells and whistles.
And so we're pleased to have Sarah continue on. She also did, I think, contact tracing and case investigation for us as well. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So she's very familiar with our department. She's going to be an excellent, already is, she's already working with us with COVID-related things, with the diverse populations. She is very familiar with all of them, so she's a great asset in this, with this position. So we're pleased to announce Sarah and she is a variable hour for us at this time. Anything else that I forgot, Sarah, you want to say?
No, other than my background is fake, so if you're, you know, feeling jealous, don't.
That's great, well, thank you. And like I said, Sarah is a great addition to our department and has been there. So we feel like she's not an addition, she's not new, she's been there, so.
Well, welcome aboard anyway, Sarah, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for letting me pop in here.
Okay. And I guess we still got you on for the next agenda item.
Let me just stay on for the entire board meeting, I'm happy to do all the agenda items, Mr. Chair.
We'll be done with today's meeting after we get her out of here, okay. Go ahead, next item is out-of-state travel?
Yeah, out-of-state travel. So this is for Positive Community Norms Summer Institute. It's in Montana in June, 21st through the 24th. And the funding for this, we're sending one individual from our department that is working in this area, building positive community norms, particularly working with the schools, K-12. Funding for this is all with the grant funding, so there's no county costs. They're funding the conference travel per diem and any costs associated with this summer institute. So my request is just to allow this individual to do the out-of-state travel.
Move approval.
Second.
You got a motion by Commissioner Campbell and second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, post, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you again.
Same to you, was that a joke or was that?
Okay, do we have extension on too or? One of those is an extension, huh?
Yes, we have several people here from extension. I'm not sure if anyone can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you right now, just, I think he's trying to get your picture on there, I think.
Let's see.
I think we're just missing Cecilia.
Just invisible today. Okay, there we got you.
Hi.
Okay, we're ready for your update for this year. Go ahead.
All right.
Mindy, it doesn't, Mindy, it doesn't look, Mindy, it doesn't look like Cecilia is on right now and I have a feeling she was probably going to kick you guys, kick it off for extension. And so maybe if you want to get started and I'll see, I'll reach out here to Cecilia and see if we can get her.
Absolutely, that sounds great. We do have a slideshow that we could share, are you guys able to see that or is it going to be on a screen that's too small for you to see?
Right now, we don't see it yet, to see.
Yeah, we should be able to see it, we have some large televisions here.
Okay. Let me see if I can get it to pull up. There we go.
Okay, now we got it, I guess.
Great. All right, we tried to get some pictures here so you could see all of our beautiful 4Hers hard at work. So my name is Mindy, I am a Clay County educator for 4H. I work with Macy Miller, she is my sidekick in all of the work that we do. And right now, we rolled into the new 4H year for 2021 in October and it wraps through the school year to 2022. And we've just had, we had a really great year last year and we're off to a great start this year. All of our club leaders are fully trained in COVID protocols, they're meeting in person. We have 10 chartered 4H clubs that are just community clubs, groups of families that get together once a month and meet. And then we also have two project groups that are back this year. So our Barnesville Lego League is back with a small and young team, but they were very strong this year and they just completed their building of their robots and working with Legos. And then we also have Shooting Sports and Wildlife this year. They started meeting last May and met through the summer and now, starting this winter, they've been meeting again and having a great time. And we have a really, like about 15 kids that are interested in Shooting Sports and Wildlife. So that's been a really great program for us. We also have a dog and pet group that's meeting. Our horse and our livestock groups are meeting and planning their spring activities. So everything is really rolling along. We do have a lot of community partnerships that we use to reach audiences that don't fit within that traditional club environment. So Clay County 4H, we're bringing the curriculum and program leader expertise. And then our partners bring the participants, the registration and the program facility. So we do have a new STEM coordinator, their name is Isaveta Herrera Grant, and they have created two new programs, Art Around the World and Space Explorers, that are being offered in several locations at different schools. And so we also have a separate partnership with Afro-American Development Association. And we did have six session series in October, November, and we are about to kick off a big after-school program for them this month as well. So lots of different things moving and happening. And we also wanted to just brag to you a little bit about all of our 4Hers and how wonderful they were this past year during showcase season. We had a number of people who went to state and national shows. And so that is kind of the place where kids get to show off what they know for the year. They start out at our county fair in July, which we all know and love, and some of them move on to state and in some cases nationals. So Maggie, who is on the left, she went as a 4H state ambassador to the National Congress and represented all of Minnesota. And then she got to meet and make friendships with people from across the United States that are involved in 4H. And then on the right, you see Hattie and Madeline. And they went to the National Arabian Show this year. They did well enough in anthropology that they won a trip to the national show for Minnesota. And when they were there at the national show, they got first place in judging and third place in anthropology. And it was a really great experience for them, they got to meet a lot of industry people. And they also met some other 4Hers from around the United States that they got to know and create relationships with. I think they're still meeting with some of them to study horse and anthropology online. And then we also have a lot of top results for our state shows here in Minnesota. We had somebody go to the dog show and win a award of excellence. At the state shoot, all of our youth who went to the state shoot placed in one ribbon in one of the areas or other areas. Our Western Heritage Showcase, we run several top results. The state horse show, you can see a list of placings from the 10 youth that were able to go there. And then the Minnesota State Fair, we also had several youth that went. So we had 18 that represented Clay County for livestock. And we had 23 that were representing in the state fair general encampment, which would be the static shows. And here we have a picture of our swine team that represented us and won several top honors. And then we also had a youth that received a purple ribbon in Fashion Review Clothes You Buy. That was really exciting for us as well, to see all the hard work that our youth and our volunteers put into the program. It really paid off this year and we're super, super proud of them. And then we also just wanted to talk a little bit about what our goals are for the upcoming year in Clay County 4H. So we usually break it down into a program goal, a growth and access goal and a retention goal. So our program goal this year is to balance enrollment geographically for that school-age population spread. So we're looking for increasing our opportunities in urban areas to really pull in some of those urban kids and get them involved in 4H as well. For growth and access, we want to have more delivery options throughout the school districts and community ed and other community organizations. So we're really looking at partnerships that can help us access audiences that we just haven't been in before. And with retention, we're looking specifically at our teenagers. We do see a big drop from that elementary age to middle school and then high school. And so Macy is really involved in bringing programs forward that are engaging for our teenagers to keep them involved in our program all the way through high school. And then I just have a slide with our names and our team that's representing you here in Clay County. Macy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Oh, no, I think that covered it. Thanks, Mindy.
Okay, I have to apologize, I guess we have Cecilia on now, I guess I've been identifying you as Cecilia. So Cecilia, did you have something to report here?
Yeah, I see Macy in the summary that we submitted.
You may have to get closer to your mic somehow.
Can you hear me better?
No, not yet. Do we have to turn our volume up or?
Can you hear me now?
I think it's on her end, yeah.
You can turn your volume up on your mic.
Yeah, my volume is all the way up, can you hear me?
Now we got you, thank you.
Okay, all right. I was just saying thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. I had some technical difficulties, I was in the wrong room. So I'm glad Steve was able to get me here. So thank you, Macy, Mindy and Samantha for presenting. As you can see on your summary, we were also going to request for new staff, for the office support staff, but we are putting a hold on that. Steve and I and Darren will get together and discuss that position a little bit more and we'll be coming back to you with another request for that position. So we will not share that position update with you right now, but just so you know, we have a staff that resigned in that position and we're just looking for best ways to replace that position. We want to do a good job before we bring somebody else new in. So you'll be hearing from us in the near future here.
Yeah. I have a question regarding that, I noticed the agenda item on that. So that position is one that's fully funded by Clay County, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I'm glad to hear that you're going to be meeting with Steve and Darren on that potential position and what it might look like. And I'm hoping that, I know Commissioner Mojo is really involved with 4H and extension right now. And I'm just, I'm hoping that we get a lot of local input on who that person would be. So I guess I'm just putting it out there that I'm hopeful that maybe Commissioner Mojo or who was the other one that's on extension now, or Commissioner Kaylee, one of those two could maybe be part of that conversation. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, do you have anything else?
That's all we have for today, unless you have questions, specific questions, or anything that you didn't hear from staff today will be more than happy to answer those. Or you know where to get ahold of us and bring those questions to us. But great work happening in Clay County.
Just one more comment too. Outside of that, I think I heard, I think it was Mindy, talk about the ambassador program. And being a former parent of somebody who was an ambassador, I certainly recognize and understand the significance and the important mentoring role those older kids play in the younger ones. So any way that you can expand that ambassador program, it's great for the overall, all the clubs and everything. So that's, I like that as a really positive feature, so thank you.
Hi, Commissioner Kaylee.
Hi, Cecilia. So we heard about 4H, but extension is a lot more than just 4H. Perhaps you could give a little overview of some of the other programs and resources available to our community through extension?
Yes. I can do that. So in Clay County, you also have an ag educator that's in the Clay County office. And that individual has also stepped up in taking, providing support to the Master Gardener Program here in Clay County. And that's a value-added position that Clay County doesn't pay for, but get that support as a partnership with the university. We also, as a university, as you know, we're research-based. So a lot of our programming is based on research and in the area of water conservation, soil health, and also, as you know, livestock. So as a community, I don't see any area that you may need support in that university. So I cannot provide that support. And that's where my role can be as that individual that's serving in between to provide that support to communities and also bring that information back to the university of what communities are. We also have Community Vitality. And that center really focused on really keeping rural communities and also anybody that's coming into the community, making it more a welcoming community so that people stay more vibrant community. There's leadership opportunities that people can participate in. Really set up to provide that train, the trainer type of model where people can get some resources and then go into their communities and share that. So we also have the CEC meeting that we have six times a year. At that meeting, we share program update. And your ag educator actually attends that meeting and provide updates to the committee. And the goal is that the committee then takes that information and go to the community and share what they are learning about extension and how they can continue to provide that support to our programming. And let me see what else. We also recently engaged in an opiate addiction program with our family development. So in certain communities, there's that program to provide support to communities that are really struggling with the addiction problem that we have in our community. And so that's something that communities can tap in as well if there's an area that you need help in. And we just closed, not we, but the Regional Sustainable Development Partnership. It's another center in the university that provide resilient community model support. And they have something called Idea Brief. And basically, communities can write up an idea of what they would like to see in the community and can bring that up for to this team. And they look at it and provide support in the area of internship, provide students really look into that specific issue that you may have in your community and provide support in that. And usually, they, you know, they like to collect those idea briefs by the end of, the mid of February 14th was the deadline. I know one community that wrote up an idea brief in area of implementing the strategic plan for the county, looking at diversity, community growth, the shift that's happening in our communities. And they are working with that group to really look at that issue and provide support for them. So that's another area. Obviously, we know we're making a difference across the state. Those who know about internship program, every summer, we have interns that are college students that come into our counties that provide support, especially during the first season. And they are able to really learn a life skill that can support them in the educational plan. And a lot of times, I think if you talk to these three staff, they probably did an internship at some point in their career, and that's why they're here. So that's some value added to communities as well. And I'll stop there. There's more to share, but that's where I'll stop.
Okay. Have any further questions? Samantha, did you have something you wanted to say?
Not in particular. I always jump on. So for, I think I've met everybody in the room, but if I haven't, I'm Samantha Laumann. I'm the direct supervisor for Mindy and Macy and Isa, just right across the hallway in the regional office. And I also coordinate and work with, give leadership to the animal science program for 4H across the northwestern part of the state and then a couple of state pieces. So I always like to be on these just to double hear what our staff are up to and answer any questions that you might have statewide about our 4H program, program opportunities, things that Clay County might be participating in. So we got Project Bowl is coming up. It's our second biggest 4H event of the entire year. There's multiple regional bowls. Clay County is going to be well represented with quite a few teams participating. And I'm staying on that animal science side, of course, for those that are really interested in that. We just had our beef ID deadline where our 4Hers identify that, yep, they're going to be showcasing beef this summer or engaging in raising livestock in that project area. And our numbers are just shy of a few head of pre-pandemic numbers. So we've been really excited, really re-engaged, knowing that we took a minor break and a slight dip, but we've really boomeranged back across the state. So Clay County is certainly showing that in their numbers as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, thank you for your, thank you for your report. Okay, we'll move on then.
Thank you so much.
Excuse me. At the beginning of the meeting, I forgot to mention that our chairman is not feeling well today. So she, I think she's, I don't know, she saw it from home or not. Are we broadcasting this or, well, no, we're broadcasting it, but.
She may be watching, but she's not on the Teams link.
Yeah, okay. Very good. With that, we'll move on then to, let's see. Well, we got one more item. You wanted to fill a vacancy?
That's been postponed.
Oh, that's been postponed? Okay, then we won't cover that. With that, we'll go on to our district manager for soil and water conservation, Mr. Kevin Kassenberg.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning Kevin.
Looks like he's got a great slideshow presented for us here.
Always easier for me to talk, I think, to you folks when I have something to look at rather than.
I see, okay.
I don't want to look at you, but I have something here. It's easier for me. But good morning, and I appreciate being asked to come to your morning meeting here again. Wishing the weather was a little bit nicer out, but I guess we deal with.
Yeah, if you can do something about that.
With what we have to deal with, yes, exactly. If I could do something, I would have thought maybe Steve would bring back something, but not yet. Anyway, just wanted to bring you up to date, a little recap of our 2021 season. I guess we all had the COVID issues to fight with, so you guys are well aware with all that issues you run into. Not getting it too advanced. We have a staff, full-time staff of five individuals. I'm not sure if you all have met them. I think Commissioner Ebinger maybe has not had the opportunity. And I think we, one of our goals this year is to get you into a board meeting and at least meet our board of five elected supervisors and our staff. But most of the guys, you probably do know Tony, Mandy, myself, Craig, and Gabe. We've been together for a number of years now and seem to have a pretty good group working together. We should think so. One of our most probably known for in the county is our tree program. There's a list of the varieties. We handle about 25 varieties of shrubs, trees, and evergreens every year. We also provide site preparation, planting, and weed maintenance. There's a bunch of our potted evergreens that just came in off a load. We sell probably over 2,000 potted evergreens to individuals in the county every year. We also plant trees for individuals. You can see with springtime, that means tree planting. And there's our tractor and our tree planting and planting crew planting on a site over near Holly. Springtime also means mud. And we do have, as you can see, one of our sites that we got into was a little bit muddy. So that was an interesting day. But like I say, spring, that's just part of, that's just part of life in working in the Clay County.
Looks like you planted a tractor there, right?
We did our best, yes. So last year, we had 12 machine planting jobs for individuals around the county, a little over 9,300 trees that we planted. And we also apply matting, which is basically a fabric that we put over the top of the trees after they're planted. And it acts as a weed barrier. It allows moisture to go through, but weeds will not pop through. So we did just around four miles of that last year. We also have a no-till drill program. And basically, that allows landowners to plant directly into their standing stubble from the previous year's crop. We have two 15-foot drills. A lot of landowners would rather see something larger than that, but 15 feet is something that everybody in the county has the ability with the size of tractors that everybody has, that they can use the drills that we've got there. They're planting into last year's sunflower crop. We planted over 1,400 acres with the two units that we have. 29 landowners rented the drills. And our motto is basically, you call, we haul. So we'll bring the drills out to your field, get you set up. And once you're smiling and you're planting, we head down the road, wait for you to give us a call that you're done, and we'll come pick it up for you and move it to the next site. Conservation Reserve Enhancement Program. This is a program that has joined up with the CRP program, which is Conservation Reserve Program, which is a federal program, and the RIM, Minnesota, State of Minnesota's RIM program, which is Reinvesting Minnesota. And it's a partnership that the federal government and the state government partnered together to offer landowners contracts for, in the CRP version, you get either a 10- or 15-year contract. The RIM program brings into perpetuity land enrolled forever. So those are definitely some things when you talk to the landowners that make them aware that by applying for this, that you're putting your parcels into a permanent easement. We've got over 80 landowners in the county that have participated in approximately 4,000 acres that are into the RIM program. The CRP partnership has been around for probably three different times over the last couple of years. And right now, we're working with three new landowners for approximately 290 acres that are presently looking at being enrolled. Wetland Conservation Act, that is a state law since 1991. We've had the program since 1998 that the county transferred those responsibilities to us. The purpose of that is basically to allow no net loss of wetlands in the county and actually overall in the state. And we have a few sites that, over 70 contacts this past year with landowners that want to do a project that impacts or potentially could impact a wetland. There's a sequence to go through to, at first, if we can work with the landowners to avoid that wetland, that's ultimately what we'd like to do. There is an opportunity to minimize some of those impacts. And ultimately, if your project is a project that you will not, you can't avoid a wetland, the option is to replace those. This is a site that was over by Holly that typically the wetland replacement site will involve wetland acreage, but also some upland acres allowing for some grassland around there. And last summer, Tony and myself, Tony is our wetland specialist, we were out inspecting one of the sites and a doe jumped out from around the edge of the grass. So we kind of knew something was, with the way she took off and kind of hung tight, we just kind of knew something was in the vicinity. So by snooping around a little bit, we got within a couple of feet of this little guy in the grass. So like I said, those are some of the rewards that are really fun working with. We have 25 projects that were worked on last year with landowners, including a bunch of this. There's 12 solar gardens that Tony was involved with. We're working with the FM mitigation, the Corps of Engineers, and also some ag activities with tiling.
Can I ask?
Please ask.
Kevin, I was going to just ask you a little bit more about the achieve a no net loss of existing wetlands. Does that come into play with counties and townships or what have you when they want to look at maybe road improvements or those types of things where often you mitigate wetlands and yet there's a wetland bank?
There is a wetland bank. There's a road wetland bank. So there's individuals that are enrolling property that will restore wetlands on their property that the state has a wetland bank for, just, but you're talking for road impacts.
Yeah, my question was going to, it's my understanding that those wetland banks are not as, there aren't as many as there used to be, and they're very expensive in terms of the trade-off. So some projects, I guess I just raise a concern about some projects can become extremely expensive.
You are exactly right. I mean, I've gone in and restored wetlands on my property, waiting for a project to come down the plate. You come along and, Kevin, you need, the county needs some acreage for impacts on the road, but you're going to be impacting wetlands. You and I work out a deal, what, how much is it worth to you? And that's where some of this stuff has risen, those prices per acre. And actually, they're probably sold per square footage. So yes.
I hope there can always be consideration to the potential of creating new wetlands.
I do too, you know. And that's something that, that's not where the, I guess, the agencies, the DNR, some of the Fish and Wildlife Services, Army Corps of Engineers, a lot of them would rather see you go back in, restore a wetland, because a lot of those characteristics that are presently, were presently there when it was drained are still retained in the soils. A lot of the seed bank is still in there. Some of the soils underneath, maybe we'd have more of a clay layer that held water originally. You go back into a site where maybe that, it's just a site that I don't use very often, but let's make a wetland out of there. Not always do they take hold. So that's some of the concerns, I guess, when we're planning, is to find an area that hopefully you have an underlying layer there that could, would hold water. Otherwise, some of that, if you had to start hauling in clay, it gets to be very expensive. But there's a lot of things in Clay County that we're somewhat privy to. Square footage, people are selling those acres for $30,000 to $35,000, you know, per acre, that type of thing. So it gets very cost prohibitive. And it comes down to kind of how bad do you have to do your project? And like I say, if there's a way to avoid that, that's ultimately what we would like to do. If there's a way to minimize that impact. But ultimately, if you want to do your project bad enough, there is a way around that. And like I say, the replacing thing, and typically what they want to do is you have one acre that you're impacting, well, we want you to replace that at two acres, so a two-to-one ratio. So all that stuff gets to be very, very time, the whole process is very time-consuming, but very costly as well. So I know, I look, I've been around long enough when the program came out to 1991. And if I had been smart and gone and bought some acres that had some drained wetlands on it, boy, you could have made yourself, you know, a lot of money. Just a little crystal ball, you'd have yourself a gold mine.
I guess I look at it from the standpoint that there's oftentimes when we have lands that come up for sale, and a lot of cases, it's tillable land, it might be wooded area. And some of those things, part of the process, and we've done it here, is it comes before us when it's going to go to the natural conservancy or the DNR and something like that. And it wasn't before. And my guess is what they anticipate is creating some sort of wildlife habitat or something within some of those things that weren't before. So you can't, so there are ways where you can do things. And I guess I'm just, I get really concerned about when we do projects for the greater good. And we, it shouldn't have to be just deep pockets to, to, to do that, so.
Do we share this with other counties then? I mean, if we need some wetlands and we don't have them in Clay County, can we get some like Becker or Norman or?
There are some areas that are, you know, are included in, in our area that we're, we're with this. We're in a, what they call a wetland bank service area, area four. And if you go to the website, you can find what counties they all entail. So areas that have like soils, like landscapes, so kind of the Red River Valley here is kind of one area. So if you would go in and take a look, you could find what counties are involved there. There actually is, you can go in and find the names of the landowners and you can go in and find the, the acreage that the landowners have that are available for sale. So Clay County right now, we don't have a whole lot of acres that are banked. So we, projects that are coming through here, we're having to direct landowners to go outside those areas to find, to find acreages to, you know, with landowners that have gone in and restored wetlands on, on, in other counties. So yeah, and that's, you know, like I say, that all is part of the game. And like I say, there's a, there's a list out there of acreage that are available that you can go purchase. But then it's between you and that landowner to come up with a, a selling price. So like I say, the whole thing is, takes a, takes a lot of time to get this, you know, from start of a project to where actually you're, you're finished. And a lot of these wetlands, they need to be monitored for five years to make sure that they are acting as wetlands again.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick follow-up to that? So that purchase price that is agreed to, does that include converting it back to the wetlands? Or who pays for that aspect or is that?
Those acres that are in a bank have already been restored to wetlands. So they, they had to go, the landowner that had an area that if they restored a wetland, they've put that, they've gone through the construction of probably blocking, maybe a ditch that drained that originally, went in and put a plug in there to drain that. And then, so there's an acreage of, of wetland that's available. Then there's always, like I said, a little bit of grass area, a little fringe around there for, you know, buffer, for wildlife habitat as well. And that's all part of the process. So there is, there is a process that that landowner has to go through in order to get that in the bank. It has to be acting as a wetland for five years. It has to be monitored before it can even get into the bank. So you got to, so there's a lot of things that have to have happened prior to, to get in the bank. And then, and then after that, you and I have a project that you, that you want to have. You and I work out a deal, what, what do you, what do you think it's worth? And what do I think it's worth to me to sell that to you? So.
Thanks for that.
It's a bartering, yeah. So, yeah, good questions, guys. It's. We also still have the ag best management program, which is through the Department of Agriculture, is a low interest loan program. Some of the things that we have available, we have the ability to have loans for septic system upgrades. If you have a, a landowner that has a septic system that's failing, not meeting code, they have an option to come into us to sign up for a, a low interest loan. We also have some ag waste systems that, you can see the, the hog barn there. We put a barn up by, by, over near Hitterdall. And the slatted floors there allows the manure to go into a holding tank underneath the, underneath the facility. We, we offer that to landowners for a, up to $200,000 is the, a low interest loan that they can apply for. Kind of leads right into the county feedlot officer position with the hog barn there. We've got 89 registered feedlots in the county. We have a, MPCA, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, requires us to do a 7% compliance check. So on those 89 registered feedlots, we have seven of them that we had to do this past year. We, dealing with the county feedlot officer position, lots of issues potentially with odor, permitting process. And then also the spreading of manure. And as you saw in that hog barn, the slotted floor allows the manure to go into a holding tank. Eventually, and usually it's, once a year, the landowners will pump those out. We just thought, here's a possible non-lethal control of rioting, looting. What's called a manure gun, you could spray the crowd. Maybe Commissioner Abner wasn't too keen on that, but something silly, guys. Anyway.
I remember it wasn't too long ago when that number was upwards of about 120 or 130 feet lots.
Exactly right.
In the county and it, it's, it's concerning to see those numbers dropping with our, you know, it's nice to have, be able to have local food producers. And to see those numbers dropping, it's, can be a little bit concerning, but.
And we, we took it over Commissioner Campbell, I think you're right, in the 120 range. And you know, we had a number of dairy farmers that were out there. Numbers are, there's not many of those left around. So yeah, that is concerning to us as well. We like to see the, the livestock producer in, in the county. Going into the county ag inspector program, the primary focus there is to control the state of Minnesota's, the Department of Natural, Department of Ags has a noxious weed list that we basically take a look at and every year it changes a little bit. And you know, enforcing those, control of those noxious weeds is, is our primary goal. You probably all maybe recognize those weeds there. They got the Canadian thistle, which has been a perennial problem on the top left. The bottom left is a leafy spurge. And then well, something that's fairly new to the county, the one in the middle portion there is poisonous hemlock. Something that's starting to sprig up that we've noticed in the eastern part of the county. So those are all things that we're focusing on, trying to get a control of. The state requires us to control those, make our best efforts. We did 250 miles of noxious weed spraying last year with our vendor from over by Hitter, uh, Ulin, Hitterdall area. We did an additional 35 miles of sprayed with a noxious weed grant, focusing primarily on that, that poisonous hemlock. Other, but the buffer law, that's one that hasn't been very popular in, in the, in the state or the county. And it's something that was, was dropped in our lap and we are basically the go-to people to get our public waters, the streams, rivers, wetlands, get a buffer around them. There's a 50-foot requirement along the DNR protected waters list, as well as a 16 and a half foot wide buffer strip. Basically it's perennial grass vegetation of some sort that needs to be planted. And at, presently we're at 99% in compliance with the public waters and 96% of the county ditches. And so far, we have a, we had a cost share program, allowing landowners to take advantage of some state money to plant these acres. We've got over $53,000 that we have spent with the landowners to plant buffers along our streams, rivers and ditches in the county. Urban conservation is another one that's taken off for us. You can see the, the top left there shows two individuals. One is putting together a blue compost tumbler and the other one is a rain barrel, the white barrel there. Man, Mandy in our office partnered with the Wilken County staff last year. Wilken County has not had a program as such in the past. And she was asked by the Wilken SWCD if she would come down and put on a little presentation workshop for their individuals in Wilken County. So she went down last year, gave two, actually has one planned for this year, but has, had two of the, two workshops last year that she went down and kind of taught their crew how to, how to go about putting these, these two, like you say, two barrels, basically one for compost and one for rain catching. And then also we have a, in the, in the fall typically COVID, if we wouldn't have COVID, I guess, always is a partnership with the river keepers where we have a water festival. And that's what's going on, on the, on the right side there. Our hopes are to have another one of our pollinator nights at Junkyard again this year, which was, which was kind of a big success a couple of years ago. We did have a smaller version of it last year. Pollinator Habitat, here's your Crestwood site, south of town. You can see the SWCD is out there working the ground on the left side. You have a, in the middle there, a picture of a, of a milkweed with a monarch butterfly clinging to the, to the plant. And that's their, that's their food source is a milkweed. And then you can see some of the flowers that are on the top left there. So if you drive out there now, hopefully as the year goes on, that we start and we get to see more and more flowers. We continually keep track of the, the thistles and some weeds that continually want to pop up there. We're mowing those areas for their, trying to get those under control. Also, it's always been a good area for garbage to be dispersed. So we always hold a cleanup day. April 26th presently is what we're looking at, getting together with, with our staff. And we do get some volunteers to come out and kind of walk the area to, to pick up garbage. Cause it is a traditional site for, where people just think it's a dump ground, which is kind of sad.
Before we move on to, I had one more question, going back to the buffer program, I hate to go back here, but you said there's about 96% control. What's happening with the other four, but what, why is, why aren't they under? Because the programs have been on for three, four years now.
You're right, in the county, the ditches were supposed to be planted by 2008, by the end of 2018. And the public waters were supposed to be planted by 2017. There was a very short timeframe that the state gave us to get those acres. So there's been some extensions offered through the state to our landowners. Primarily the, why the ditches haven't been completed yet is we've, we've been working with the Buffalo Red River Watershed District. They are going through the process of staking out and recording that buffer area for landowners and then planting those, those areas. So COVID related has delayed a, a lot of things, holding meetings, because they need to hold public hearings because there are some acreage payments that they are giving to those landowners for those, that, that 16 and a half foot width. So like I say, primarily though, the biggest concern has been the ones in the Buffalo Red, that the Buffalo Red Watershed District who, who took the responsibilities of enforcement and are working with the landowners to get, get them a payment. Just the slowdown of COVID and the recording, going out, staking those areas and surveying those areas and getting an acreage figure, of which then there, there is a payment to landowners for, for, basically for the allowance of that buffer strip to be planted. So we're hoping that that should be done this year. Our hopes and the state is pushing us to get things 100%. We're close.
Okay. I know it's close, I just wondered what the, all of this, because I thought they were supposed to be all in compliance.
You are right, Frank, it, they're all supposed to be done. And like I say, it isn't that we've been dragging our feet. There's just been some, I guess, some circumstances that just are, are, are lagging.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for taking you off track there.
Good question, you're, you're right, it was all supposed to have been done by now. You are, you are right. Walk-in access, basically if there's landowners that have property that they are willing to allow public hunting on, there is a program through the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources that we partner with to have them sign, have them sign up. There are a, per acres, $18 per acre they can receive to allow public hunting on their property. So it's got to be kind of a popular item. And in Clay County, we've got 1,600 acres amongst eight landowners that are presently enrolled. There's a signup period going right now, on right now. So we're hoping that those individuals continue to, to allow that public hunting on their property.
So what's the requirements for having a walk-in access? I mean, can you just take any land and say, I want a?
It has to have some vegetative cover or some trees at them. But most of it that we're seeing is, is probably like CRP land or these rim acres that if you're, you know, a lot of people enroll these areas for their own hunting purposes, to have your own hunting ground. But if you're not a hunter and you don't mind having somebody come out there and hunt your property, they have to be a minimum of 40 acres in size. But we've got a few that are larger than that. But like I say, if you're, if you're willing to allow public hunting on there, why not take advantage and take, take the, the, the payment from the, from the DNR? Pay for part of your property taxes that you continue to pay on. And if you're okay with allowing, you know, individuals to, to hunt.
So you're saying you can enroll it for your own use then?
Sure, you could, but like I say, you can't, you, you can hunt your own, but you, you, if this walk-in access allows the public to go on there. So if you're going to take advantage of the program, you have to allow public hunting.
Okay, very good, I was just.
The DNR comes out and puts these yellow signs on there, basically alerting the public to this site is open for public hunting, you know, it's.
Okay.
Basically you're, we're hoping people respect that area, don't leave garbage and that type of thing. And there is a $3 fee for, for, for being allowed to hunt on the, the land or the license allows for $3 to go to the state to, to help pay for this. So.
Okay.
Aquatic invasive species program, primarily it's public awareness. We only have four counties that would have, four counties, four lakes in the county that have public access. And that's primarily what the, the focus is on those public accesses and making landowners, boaters, those type of people aware that this lake is, you know, hopefully, hopefully it does not have invasive species, although there's getting to be more. We just heard the, last week that Turtle Lake has got a problem now. So there's some concern with, with those issues and they've got a, a siphoning program to lower, lower the, the water level down out there. So it's concerns with draining that siphoning, siphon out of the lake and water being displaced downstream. So all concerns that we've got with that. Primarily we've had a few billboards that we've helped pay around the county. We put some promotional items, such as coasters, boat bags, some canned cozies, some posters that we've got. So primarily it's public awareness that, that our main focus is on with, with this program.
Kevin, you mentioned the, the four lakes, how about the rivers?
Rivers also, yes, yep, they are also part of that, so yeah.
So they're.
Most of them don't have, most of them don't have public access, you know, I think there's one, I think there's one in Johnson Park, I believe there's one. Otherwise, otherwise there aren't any, you know, public accesses as such. So then that's what triggers them to be part of the, the, there's a payment that the state gives to the county, which you guys transferred that responsibility to us a couple of years ago. And it's based on the number of boat parking spaces at the boat access.
I know there's a, you mentioned the Johnson Park, I believe there's one out by, I refer to it as the Convent Road.
I know what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
There's one there as well, but I was, I'm assuming that they're also.
They would be included in the, yeah, if there's a parking space, you know, I'm trying to think of the MB Johnson, if there's parking spaces, basically, there is a little parking lot kind of up, uphill.
Yeah, there, there is a little one, yep.
And finally, I guess we kind of get into something fairly new and I, I know you all were part of this. The whole process is one watershed, one plan. I know Frank and Commissioner Mojo were sat in on policy committee items. There's two different watersheds in the county, the Buffalo Red as well as the Wild Rice. The Buffalo Red covers about three-fourths of Clay County and the, the Wild Rice has about, about a quarter, the remaining quarter, I should say. Both have gone through the process of getting, applying for and receiving funding for one watershed, one plan. Each encompasses not within the county, but actually follows county as well as boundaries of the watershed. So we're involving with, in the Buffalo Red, Wilken County, Becker County, Clay County, a little bit of, of Otter Tail. And then the Wild Rice, we've got part of Clearwater, Norman, Menomen, Polk, East and West Polk and as well as Clay County. And primarily what the, the focus was, we got together and submitted an application to the Board of Water and Soil Resources, the state agency, to focus on erosion and, you know, problems in, in the county, in our county that we put together kind of a work plan. We each, each watershed district receives $1.3 million over two years. We're in the process of putting together another plan because it's going to continue down the road. One of the sites that we've got primarily is along the Buffalo River. We've got numerous sites of, of erosion. Here's one that's called a toe wood sod mat, basically the, you can see the slumping bank on the left side. A contractor comes in, kind of shapes the bank and then they're using vegetation, trees, brush, living, living brush and that type of thing. And kind of you build a bank along that area. It's easy one for DNR to, to buy into and permit because it's using, you know, bioengineering, live stuff. They don't like to see rock, they don't like to see concrete going into the river. So this is one of the sites by Glendon. And here's one over by Rollog that we put in, just got started this past fall. It's a site with the steep, steep soil, steep landscape and gullies in the soil. So basically what this put in a water and sediment control basin. It has a, you go to the, to where, where the gully is, you put a pipe under, underground and you build a little dike where the, it restores a little pond behind a standpipe. And it's really hard to see on the, on the bottom right there, but there actually is a little dike there and the, the pipe is covered up and it basically meters water out through a, a pipe that stands up behind this little dike. So like I say, we're hoping to have a tour sometime here. You know, we had tried the last couple of years to have a tour to go out and see some of these things. And like I say, they're really kind of hard to show on, you know, black and white, the ground. But these are types of things that we have a numerous demand for and using these one watershed, one plans, that's where we're going to be focusing a lot of our efforts on. Our program outfit, look for 2022, our program stays pretty consistent with the number of people, the types of people that we work with, you know, landowners. We're getting more involved with our urban folks, hoping to get some relief from COVID-19 here in 2022. And I know a lot more increased time we'll be working in our watersheds with our partners with, with this one watershed, one plan. Any other questions you've got, I'd be happy to field them and do my best.
Well, thank you so much for, that's very informative with you that there is, good report and glad to hear.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Okay, do we have Kurt on somewhere then? Oh, Kurt is here. Thank you for making it today.
Thanks, Kevin.
Got a lot of pages there.
Well, you know, I have good conversation out in the hallway.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see.
I don't know what we were talking about. I didn't listen.
Joe, Joe updated you on what you're doing?
Yeah, yeah, he says you're running late.
Good morning. Is Madam Chair on? I didn't quite catch that. Is she?
She is not.
All right. Morning Commissioners, Veterans Service Office, Kirk Cannon. Just a little history of what we do for Commissioner Jenna and David. We're, we counsel, advise, assist veterans, widows and their dependents. So the, the whole gamut, as far as the veterans and their family, we assist, secure benefits for, in collaboration with other agencies. We're nationally accredited. We, we do require CEUs every year to be nationally accredited. And usually we get those on a one-time shot when we travel every year. This year will be San Antonio here in June, if that still is going to happen. Last year we did virtually, of course, online. We require twelve CEUs a year to maintain our accreditation. What that accreditation does is allows us to be accredited with the Disabled American Vets, the American Legion, the VFW. I am one of few that are, well, they're going away. It's the Vietnam Veterans of America accreditation. So I have quite a few and Jennifer in our office does as well as a Veterans Service rep. So. Next page, National Service Organizations. That's who we deal with mostly at the Fargo Regional Office, which is a side building to the big VA hospital. That's where they house themselves. So we are the liaison between the veteran, assisting them and the VA, basically. So we handle all services for them. Skip to the two fourteen, DD two fourteen page. That's the most important document that a veteran will have. That, that signifies and tells us that they are a veteran, either honorably, dishonorably, other than honorably discharged. And that, that takes an effect for benefits. But this is the form that we require before we even start services. Because if they're not a vet, I had this happen when I started six years ago, seven years ago, that I worked up a vet and he wasn't a vet. So I learned my lesson the hard way, a couple hours into training. So. That is the most single important document. We go find that through the archives. They have it on hand. Or we have it on file or the state does as well. We use dads, our, our moms a lot. The, where the registers had to upload all the DD two fourteens for veterans. So we have access to that program where we can go see if any, if it's in a different county, their discharge papers. So. The VA benefits brief, the big page here, the circle ones. This is kind of the most, what we do daily. Starting with pension, we do pension for veterans that might be low income. And they are a vet and they've met their criteria and then they can receive monetary value every month. Education and training, education is usually your GI Bill. How much credits do I have? If they've got VoC Rehab, we send them to VoC Rehab. We do have state representatives in our area for higher education that we send them to. So the resources there are, are outside of our office, but we can direct them where to go. The home loan guarantee, that's the certificate of eligibility we do at our office for veterans buying homes, which just secures part of the loan. It's not a, it is a dollar amount, but that tells the bank, hey, this is how much we're going to secure of this veteran's loan if they go AWOL or belly up or can't make their payment. So. Life insurance we do. We do, unfortunately, we do a lot of burial memorials for the widow. Pre-burials when they're, when they're both living, we, we do those briefings to, to let them know that we're always there. This office will always be here. So it is quite overwhelming for the spouse to know all the rules. And we just tell them to call us and we'll get it figured out. So you don't have to remember all this. Healthcare, eighty, eighty-five percent is the disability compensation. And we'll go into that. That's when a service-connected injury has occurred, that you believe this injury is service-related. We have to prove that. And then you get service-connected, which ranges from a zero percent to a hundred percent or anywhere in between. And ten percent or higher brings a monetary payment to the veteran monthly, which entails Clay County veterans, brings money into Clay, Clay County. So that's our big intent for spending in our county. So. We do quite a bit of those. We have a very good success rate on service connections and pretty, pretty proud of that. So a lot of work goes into that thing. What is compensation? It's base, it's benefits based on disabilities that incurred or was aggravated. So you could have a pre-existing disability that was aggravated beyond normal progression while you were in service and then that gets service-connected. So. Or just simple as hearing loss and tinnitus based on your duty MOS, field artillery, radio operations, things like that. So. And there are survivor benefits as well. So. So the true definition is service-connected, that any veteran who suffers an injury or condition caused by or aggravated by military service can request a service connection disposition. So. And then your road to service connection, there are many ways to get to that service. Incurred, meaning direct injury, aggravated, pre-existing, aggravated beyond. And you can also do, if you get a primary, meaning incurred, direct service connection. You can get a secondary. Prime example is diabetes service connected directly. Neuropathy, the numbness tingling in your extremities could be secondary to your diabetes. So the list can go on and on. And a person in our office has to know this and think of that. Otherwise, you would just leave the veteran with diabetes and you wouldn't advance the claim farther. And then presumptive are usually during any combat-related illnesses. The VA has conceded presumptives for this, certain disabilities that goes all the way back to Vietnam. There's seventeen or eighteen presumptives, all the way up to Iraqi and Gulf War presumptives. Meaning you have it, you were in that war, let's put it together and get service-connected. So those are, those are pretty much the easiest ones, the presumptives. With that right now is the Blue Water Navy passed in nineteen. Those are a little slower right now because we have to prove that their ship was within twelve nautical miles of Vietnam shoreline. So that's a, a lot of in-depth research and the VA has hired personnel to do that for us now. So we don't have to do three, four hours trying to find their ship. So. Claims process, just our appointment schedules. We do two to three each a day. We have. We haven't really closed, except for the first month we were required to close. But we've been seeing clients since then. We, we've taken some back. We used to do four a day each, but we wanted to free up one to answer phones while the other one was busy with a client. So. Two to three a day each, and then we have multiple walk-ins. So we try to at least get a face-to-face and verbal with them before they leave. We initiate the claim, we develop the claim, we send the claim off. The claim is decided after an exam or two, and then the veteran is notified of the results. So that lengthy process from start to finish used to be in and out the door in three months. Now we're seven to twelve months. It's, it's backlog. So. It's a, a good thing about that, the claim is, and I try to put a positive and say it's a great savings plan if you get connected because then you're retro paid back to the start of it. So. Always got to spin it for them. But. Next page is just some healthcare ancillary benefits that the VA has. There's multiple more that just was added in last month. We even have chiropractor service now. So. Veterans Treatment Court, we're actively involved in that weekly. Numbers, numbers dictate how busy we are. We do have one currently now that we'll meet with tomorrow. We just got the email. So extremely grateful and honored to be a part of the treatment court, especially when they graduate, you don't hear from them, and they make themselves, you know, sustainable in life and, and the community. It's, it's a wonderful feeling and helps them out too. So a great program. Actually, I think the judge, when I first got hired, would not sign my, unless I was going to do Veterans Court, would not sign me on to swear me in. She, she wanted to make sure Veteran Court was going to be. Well, I said, I need a job, so of course I am. So. Death and burials, we do. We work with the funeral homes, the headstone, footstones, the bronze stars. Jennifer in our office is highly skilled at this briefing, so she does. I'm going to say a hundred percent of them, but sometimes I have to fill in and I don't get in depth like she does. But they are well taken care of and the widows and family are very informed of what's going on and how to proceed. Just a little stats for you. We now have myself, Jennifer and the admin started last month full-time. That's working out very well as far as our rotation. Thirty-four, thirty-eight veterans identified. The State Soldiers Assistance Program, financial assistance, that's counseling, financial assistance. And other financial awards that the veteran needs, we ranked, we didn't rank, we, one hundred and forty thousand, three twenty last year. We did receive the twelve thousand five hundred CVSO Operational Enhancement Grant through the state. And that's a grant application that needs to be applied for every year. Nationally accredited. There's our unemployment. We are functional, zero homeless veterans in Clay County. And then that's a big key of being aware of the veteran that is homeless. So identification in this is key, even in the jail system or the homeless shelters. We have to know before we can proceed. So I, I, I highlight identification on those. And if you see my truck pulled over because I'm a vet and I'm homeless and I'm pulled up on the curb, I'm trying to help that vet or find out if that's actually a veteran. Because I don't want a vet handling for money in my county, so I usually pull over. Senate File two eight seven nine, I, I have to report that. A veteran came to me in nineteen and said, let's try to get license and tabs and taxes on vehicles. North Dakota has something similar. It failed in nineteen and the Transportation Committee. And we resubmitted it this year. That is the Senate File. We have Senator Ekin and another senator that's authoring the bill. So that is advancing, tracking that. I am not a legislator. I don't know how to read that stuff. But we did it and now it's going forward and we can hopefully get some relief on vehicle taxes and things for the veteran. I thought this was important since COVID, we've been exposed, exposure quarantine times three in our office since the beginning. And I, I hold the only positive award in the office. So I decided to take sick leave because I didn't want to work at all. So it put me out pretty good. So. Other than that, you know, I don't have much to, just to highlight for you guys to keep that. I think my face is on there. If you want to tell people what Kurt looks like, you can pull out this packet. But your veterans in Clay County are very well taken care of and that's, that's our main goal for customer service in this county. So. One of our twenty twenty-two goals is to start our outreach events again, back to the Uly Nursing Home. The end of twenty twenty-one picked up a little bit. I spoke at a couple. But word of mouth is our best advertising in, in our office. And it gets out. You know, veterans are not short of telling other veterans and people to go see Kurt or Jennifer. So it helps out. So. That's all I have. We appreciate your guys' support every year and we'll keep driving on.
Any questions? Yes.
Kurt, you said if you see somebody on the side of the road with a sign saying, you know, vet needs help, you'll pull over and talk to them. Can you talk about some of the other ways you work to identify who might be a homeless vet?
Well, we've worked with the jail intake people to identify their, they have an intake sheet. And we need to put, are you a veteran on that sheet? Because then that would, that would prompt Veterans Court for that and if they needed help there. You got the COC, which is the Community Outreach Care Program. And then the VA, they show up at the VA and then they're in our county and then they call, they call for us to see that they're homeless and they, can we take care of them?
Do you not work with any of the shelters in the area?
Yep, yep. The shelters call us, Gladys and.
Churches United?
Was that?
Churches United?
Yeah, Churches United. I used to volunteer there when I first started because I, I didn't know my job yet. So I had lots of time, but now, now I don't, don't have time. So I used to do lunches there, but they have cards or brochures of ours to identify veterans. We got it pretty much, I think we got it covered between shelters and the VA because they're always going to find the VA and then the, the social workers call that county. So.
Commissioner Campbell.
Commissioner Kaylee asked my question, so I don't need to.
Yeah. So I, about pulling over is I do see signs, I'm a veteran and I need help. So I want to make sure that, you know, I don't give them the fifty questions right there on the curb. But here is who I am. Give me a call and hand them my card. So. Most of my trucks probably double parked, so on a curb. But it helps.
Being a border community, with the transient nature, people going back and forth across the river, does that complicate things for you?
It sure does. Yeah, playing both sides of the fence is, is tough. Because as far as if you got benefits over here, and then they show up in our office and we give them benefits as well. There is a thirty-day in-residency for state benefits. So it kind of eliminates how long you've been here. And then we have to have a driver's license. There's some kind of utility bill that says you have a place. Or we can get a letter from the shelter saying they've been there for some time. So. Being so close, it is, yes. It's, it's a challenge. But we try to communicate with our partners in Cass County, saying, have you seen this person?
I don't have another question, but I comment. I, I get around once in a while. And I was, recently I was at the Legion for the Freezen for a Reason, the deal that they had there as part of Frostival. And, and your work gets brought up by a lot of people I talk to and they're grateful for the work that you and Jennifer, your volunteer staff, everybody does. And I just wanted to relay that to you, that you continue to impress the veteran community with your work.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Means a lot. Yes. We put in the time and the effort and it's rewarding to hear that.
Well, thank you very much for giving us the update.
Good seeing you, sir.
Yeah. Nice to see you again too. Okay, Joe.
Morning, I'm bringing Dave here too because he's been heavily involved in this as well. So today, we're bringing forward a LED retrofit replacement project out at the Joint Shared Facility. This is part of our capital improvement plan that we've had under the highway budget. So what we did is the county, we took the lead on this project and worked with Mindot and the city of Moorhead. And we've gotten two quotes and we are asking to move forward with this project. with this project. Our share of this, we got two quotes, Rix Electric at $63,900 and CB Electric at $64,750. We're requesting to move forward with Rix Electric, and our county share would be $28,755 on that, so. And we've ran this by the building committee as well.
Okay.
We had an actual budget of $100,000.
And we did also send it through the City of Moorhead, correct, as well as the state, and they both were aware of it, were positive, moving forward, and approved the numbers as well.
Since these bits are closed, did you look at them, that they both cover everything?
Yeah, so what we did is, we did a walkthrough with both contractors and did the exact same project, so. We actually bid the same company, too, that provides the fixture, so that's probably why it's really close, so. But yeah, it's apples to apples, so, as far as that. The other thing is, we're working on a rebate with more public services, well. We don't have that information back yet, but it's, we should, we have a possible rebate coming to, it just takes them a little bit more time to do this, so.
I will move approval of this item.
Okay, we got a motion, Commissioner Kaylee, and second by Commissioner Ebinger. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Darren. Must have been a good drive in this morning.
I drove my motor grader today, so.
Glad you got a backup.
Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna get one of those signs that Kurt talked about for my truck, so when I put it in a ditch, "I'm a vet, I need help," and I'm gonna call Kurt Cannon to come and pull me out, but it was a little hairy this morning coming in.
Mr. and Karen, your 214 with you.
Yeah, I have my 214, so. I, this should be fairly quick. We talked about this a little bit last week at board on the detox contract. It's the only one that we have open right now. It is a one-year contract, and the contract has not changed except for there was a slight increase in the on-call pay, and then we, of course, updated the county contribution and benefits as we normally do with a new contract, just to reflect what this year's county contribution was. So for this session, I'm asking approval of the detox contract. And then, as you recall, all the contracts will be open starting next year, so we'll start negotiating them, and we'll probably still have another closed session to kind of get the board's thoughts on how we want to proceed with that, so. But for today, we're just trying to close out the detox contract.
Any questions, sir?
Move for approval.
We got a motion for Commissioner Ebinger to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Do you want me to wait till the chair gets back to sign it, or do you want to sign it today? It's no huge rush, but. Sign it today? Okay. I have a copy of it, so I'll give it to you after the board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the equipment, people here for Trailblazers. Yes, they, oh, it's not the Trailblazers coming in.
I don't see Greg here this morning. I could maybe sit in on this one, Mr. Chair, if that would work.
No, fine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board is well aware, the Clay County Board of Commission has supported the Clay County Trailblazer Snowmobile Club on the annual basis. This year, they are, in addition to their, the ongoing relationship, they're applying for a grant of up to $75,000 through the state of Minnesota. As a snowmobile club, they're unable to do that by themselves, and so it requires a government agency to act on their behalf. And so the resolution before you this morning would provide them the opportunity or the approval to apply for this grant, with the understanding that if they were to accept that, that that money would be granted to the, to Clay County, and ultimately, we would pass, be the pass-through as far as for the snowmobile club. They've done this in the past. I think they did it about two years ago when the grant was available. Unfortunately, at that time, they did not receive, receive the funding, and so the opportunity came again, and so that is what the request is before this board this morning.
Mr. Chair, I'd move Resolution 2022-08.
Hey, we got a motion to approve Resolution 2022-8. Second. And we got a second. We got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to the Highway Department requests.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dave.
We've got three items, and then when we get done, we have a little video clip our maintenance foreman had sent us. I thought we'd show you some of the activities. It's just one little clip, but I think you'll like it, so.
Very good.
Our first item is for the small city street allotment. This is an annual allotment that the auditor's office puts together, and it is, shows all the dollars that we pass through to the small cities for doing work on county roads in their, in their cities as well as to the City of Moorhead, which is the much larger portion, and that is for, so the small city is for doing work on their streets. It's kind of a passer that we share with them to give them some dollars to do maintenance, and then the City of Moorhead's is through the agreement that we put together about 20 years ago or so. Like I said, that's a much larger piece, and that also includes, I think, some, we did a switch over with 40th Avenue South, so there's some debt repayment back on that, as well as the bridge levy fund that kind of takes up the other part. So they, they do maintenance work on our roads and their city limits to include seal coating and striping and snow plowing, so. So the City of Moorhead's share for 2022 is $383,222.46, and then the combined share for Barnesville, Comstock, Dilworth, Felton, Georgetown, Glendon, Holly, Hitterdale, Saban, and Yulin is $78,138.14.
So we get about $450,000 from the state on that now.
Well, this is through the county, I believe.
Those are, these are, these are actually items that Highway Department includes in their annual budget for the payment to those communities to do the work on our behalf, to maintain our roads within, inside their incorporated areas.
Right, and our intergovernmental payment line item.
Okay.
I'm just curious, Dave, and you don't need to have today, but maybe at some point in time, maybe if we could give a, a kind of a historical perspective from year to year, how those costs are.
Yep. I did some history looking one time, too. I went way back into the 50s, I believe, when this very first...
I don't want to go back that far.
Okay, just to see like how it got started, you know, and things were different back then. Back then, the, anything other than the county or the, maybe the city of Moorhead didn't get hardly any dollars, so there was a lot of cost sharing and a lot of, lot of cooperation between the county and the smaller community.
A lot of people don't even realize that 11th Street North, right, that goes right in front of here, is actually a county road, and the city maintains that, and we reimburse them. That's what part of this is.
Yep, absolutely.
But I'm just curious from an, from an annual standpoint, you could maybe bring it to Highway Tracking or something to see sometime, but, and I wouldn't put a lot of work into it. I'd just like to just see in the historical perspective of those costs.
Right, and I have them all in my, on a binder back at my desk, so it'd be quickly.
Kind of following up on that a little bit. You said that the agreement with the City of Moorhead is about 20 years old?
Right.
Is that reviewed annually or every few years?
Well, there is a schedule set up in there, and I don't know, did that, did that come through on the back? Probably not.
It's on the back page.
Yeah, there's, there's a schedule that goes through, I think it's FY '25, so, and I've been looking at this since I started ticking it off, so I mean, we only got like three more payments left for the 40th Avenue South portion, and then after that time, depending on what happens, our share to them will be about $160,000. So it's about $160,000, I believe, for the street work, and about $210,000 for the repayment on that $3 million road recon that they put together on 40th Avenue. So we switched over a gravel road. It's the one that runs the horn boppers there. That used to be a really low-volume gravel road, and when we did a turn back to the City of Moorhead, they, they built a really strong, really good section, and then we had to share $3 million for that work back in 2005, I think it was. So once that sun sets, which is 2025, so I think we got '23, '24, and '25, then it'll be to the good about 210 grand.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we need approval of this Resolution 2022-09.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, and second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, I, the next item is kind of a sad item, because I've worked with this gentleman for many, many years. We do have retirement in our sign department. Our sign foreman is, he's been talking about and giving us lots of notice, so it's been good, and he's actually slid his timeline back several, I think at least six months or so, which has been nice for us to have him on as long as we can, but effective March 30th, our sign foreman will be out on medical leave, and then his last actual day with the county will be May 30th, so this is a very busy time for us, as we have spring road restrictions, and there's a lot of signage that has to go up and down during this time, as well if there's any flooding. He's very busy with barricading and that sort of thing, so we did bring it to Highway Tracking Committee, asking for support to, in the interim, start the process of replacing this individual. The way it works with the union policies, we have to advertise internally for five days, and then depending on what happens internally, then there might be some, a backfill issue, and then with, once that gets resolved, then we'd advertise another five days internally, and then if there's any part-time staff that's, or burial hour staff that's with us that is interested in full-time employment, and I believe there is, then we would backfill the, the full-time position. So there might be a couple iterations here. It'll take a, you know, and if there's multiple people interested, then we gotta do interviews, and that's where it takes a little bit of time. If it is all internally, it goes a little bit quicker, and we don't have to advertise, and I kind of think it's gonna work that way, but you don't know for sure, but we'd like to have it filled by April 4th if we could, so we'd kind of want to take the month of March to try to get things lined up, and then hopefully be ready to, you know, first part of April or so, things get, kind of start getting a little more busy, so.
I just have a comment, if you're...
Oh, sorry.
I, this was, like you mentioned, this was brought up in our Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and it is unfortunate that, one that he's retiring, and he has some other reasons why he has to be gone for a while, so he's, he's done a tremendous job for us in the past, but what we're coming up on is some, is the potential for some serious need to have that position in place. If you haven't been around to know that we have a lot of times during flooding, we have to close a lot of roads, and there are barricades, and there's all sorts, far more than just the road restriction issue that has to be done, and based on this lovely weather we're having, I'm assuming we're gonna have some sort of water melting at some point in time and some issues going on this spring. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that we authorize the approval to fill the sign form position using the dates, the suggested dates that Dave has talked about, and to include any backfill as needed.
Second.
We got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, our last item is a, bringing with you, to you a contract amendment. I'll have Justin go through that a little bit. It's for that North Broadway Bridge. We're kind of finally getting things rolling on that to move forward.
Yeah, so I've been working with the City of Fargo on a scope amendment to the original kind of bridge study contract, and this is to include the bridge removal design, all the necessary permits for both Minnesota and North Dakota, and a review of the contractor's submittals once the project is awarded. The total cost of this amendment is $36,284, which is split 50/50 with the City of Fargo, and then Clay County's share of $18,142 will be reimbursed by Minnesota Bridge Bond Funds.
Is that an estimate, do you, do you think? So it's, it's probably like maybe a not-to-exceed, so I don't know if it's gonna for sure be that, but that's, that's their estimate to date, so it may vary, but that's their not-to-exceed estimate at this time.
So you're saying it's not to exceed $18,142?
I believe that's how they typically put them together.
I mean, our share?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
So we're anticipating the cost of this design work to be in the mid-30s, $36,000, and then whatever it ends up being, our share will be half of that, the City of Fargo.
All right.
Well, it's, it needs to be done.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, it's just a matter of making sure that just the, this is just a study to determine how to remove the bridge.
It's actually to design the plan, so we can actually go to bid with them, yep.
Has Fargo approved their 50%?
Is that going to city council?
They're bringing it to, I think they call it PUPAC, Public Utility. I don't know what their acronym is, but that goes later this week.
This week, okay.
But they have given the contractor okay to proceed.
Thank you.
I'd move approval.
Second.
We got a motion, Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Kaylee, to approve the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, and then Justin's got a little video clip that we had gotten from our maintenance foreman, Kim Carpenter. As you probably are aware, our guys have been out, based on the weather, they were out all, most of the weekend and to include yesterday, and it might not be as big as it could be, but you can see we've got two blowers out there on County Road 26. This is kind of by that Pines area, Frank, just, just west of Hitterdale. We got a John Deere blower, as well as a wheel loader blower beside it, and trying to chew at the high banks on one of our paved roads. And I, I think we are getting, well, I've been told we're gonna be hiring dozers here around the county in various spots, because, you know, all of our guys are out running either motor graders or snowplow trucks, and we just don't have time. You know, we do have a dozer available for this, one piece of equipment, but we're probably gonna be hiring several contractors to help push banks back. They're just getting too, we've been trying to bide our time and hold back as much as we can, because it's really expensive, but it's to a point now where I don't think we can wait any longer, so we need to start pushing back some.
The wind should have blown some of them back.
Right. The hard thing is, when the wind goes from the north to the south and back, it just, it hits you from both sides, and it fills in. Everything they did all weekends, all blown back in, so we really covered no ground, but we'll keep at it, and I've heard we had some breakdowns, so hopefully we get all of our equipment kind of back and up and running, and we had 22 guys. We've got 11 motor grader operators, and then 11 operators in snowplow trucks. We got 22 pieces at one time, and the fuel budget's not looking good right now, because obviously we're having a lot of fuel, but we gotta do what we gotta do, and, you know, last year was a little better winter. This year, we're getting smacked a little bit, and maybe if I add one last thing, is I think we have Highway Tracking to this afternoon, is that right? And we are gonna talk about last year's maintenance contract, so we're, we're to that point, too, and then on Thursday, we're hosting the township meeting with the township officers to show them the numbers and explain the contract where we're at. That's been fantastic lately with our, our new process. I shouldn't say it's new. It's probably five-plus years old or so, but it's gone very, very well, very, very steady on the dollar amount. You don't see big fluctuations like we used to, and almost no questions, and in fact, let the cat out of the bag, the number is gonna go down a little bit from last year, so they always like to see that.
Dave, that meeting on Thursday is at what time?
I think it's 3:30.
Yes.
And we're gonna have it in this room here, I believe?
Yeah, I have a conflict, so I won't be able to, but Frank, maybe you can.
Yeah, I'm on a...
3:30.
Yeah, we have a diversion authority meeting that meets at that exact...
And we'll send out an email, like we had talked, Kevin, to all the... And we'll send out an email, like we had talked, Kevin, to all the township officials today, giving them a heads up in case they can't make it Thursday, because the timeline is tight between their annual meeting, but our, the amount of work that our highway accountant has to do is tremendous, and she just, in fact, we got our, we got the number from her last night at one-eleven, so she was working late last night, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
With that, we'll go on committee reports, Commissioner Kaylee, you wanna start us out?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, Tuesday, the fifteenth, I attended the Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Council, and we talked a little bit about our outreach strategy, we'd like to increase attendance at those meetings, both from citizens who utilize mental health services in the area, family members, or close friends of folks who utilize services, as well as providers. It was nice that we had someone from the Morehead Police Department join us at this last meeting to give an update on some of the work that they've been doing as well, and some of the training that their officers receive in responding to folks who are in mental health situations. Yeah, it was just a good conversation, and another lovely thing that happens at that meeting as well, because we have so many different agencies that attend, they always share what their wait lists look like for different services, and this helps the providers then, if they have a long list in one area, but somebody else doesn't have a wait list, then know who they can push those clients towards. There's good camaraderie in the mental health providers in the area, so they don't have a problem taking folks off their waiting list and pushing them to a different agency to make sure folks can receive services as soon as possible. There was, Nicestrom and Associates talked about a new program that they have for case management, so the county and a few other people provide really intensive case management services, but a lot of times, there's folks that need something, step back a little bit, they need a little bit of case management services, but maybe not at that intense level that some of the other providers have, so they have a new in-home case management service, and that's through Nicestrom and Associates, and they have immediate openings for that. That's about it from that meeting. Then the next day, the sixteenth, I attended the Historical and Cultural Society of Clay County meeting, the summer is the fortieth anniversary of the Jemkampst voyage to Norway, so they're working on updating that ship gallery, they're still taking donations, if anybody would like to contribute towards redoing all of the signage and interpretation for that ship, there'll also be an open house celebration for all of that coming at the end of July. Another upcoming event on the twenty-sixth, there's a virtual event talking about Nellie Francis, who was an African-American woman who really led the Whitman Suffrage Campaign in nineteen-nineteen, and, can't read my notes, some law in nineteen-twenty-one, at any rate, a local African-American leader in equal rights, so that will be a virtual event, you can find that on the website or on Facebook. In March, March twenty-second is the opening of an exhibit that I think is gonna be really fascinating, it's called Stories Local Black History, so they're really diving into some of the forgotten and untold stories of the African-American population in our area, including stories from the, you know, the earliest times eighteen-seventies to eighteen-nineties, and then some of the refugee resettlement groups that have come in, they're also interviewing local community leaders, and they're collecting stories of barbers, so a long time ago, when some of the first African-Americans entered this area, the barbers were like the highest level of African-American society, they were the community leaders, it was a high level of education for them at that point in time, so they're collecting some of those stories of local barbers. For example, Felix Battles, if you've heard of the statue that they're looking to put up, Felix Battles was the first, we think, African-American barber in the area, and he was also in the military, so there will be a statue in his honor being put up in Morehead, the site's not totally official yet, but we're looking forward to that as well. At that meeting, we also got an overview of how the Historical Society is adding items to mncollections.org, this is where the public can look and see what some of the artifacts we have in our archives are, the stories behind them, researchers can look up items on there, and it will also help inform our staff to, as to what's in the collection, and what items they might, they might wanna put in exhibits, both virtual and physical down the road. The next day, on the seventeenth, I attended the Clay County Suicide and Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. We had a really good overview of sources of strength, so when Kathy was here earlier, and we approved a staff member going to receive training for sources of strength, that's the program that we heard about, so some examples of sources of strength are family support, positive friends, mentors or trusted adults, healthy activities, spirituality or gratitude, physical health, mental health, these are all areas that have been identified, research-based areas that have been identified as helping youth build more resilience, and so Jason McCoy is working in the DGF schools, implementing these sources of strength, and in helping our kids build resilience so that they can avoid getting sucked into substance abuse, or avoid mental health crises, and also to help their friends when they're dealing with these things as well, it's very peer-led, so the youth are trained in how to talk to each other, and how to build a community that is resilient amongst themselves, anybody who's worked with teens know that they would rather listen to another teen than a parent or a teacher, so that's a real strength of this program. In that meeting as well, Ni'amal with Public Health gave an update on the survey that they are doing with the New American Communities, and assessing what mental health ideas and access looks like for that, for some of those communities, to give us a better picture for the work that needs to be done, how to reduce stigma for accessing services, and what needs are out there. So that work is continuing, the survey is available online, it's also available in a paper format, translators are available for anybody that would be interested in taking that survey, the more surveys that we get completed, the better, so far, thirty-three surveys have been submitted, interestingly, only twenty-three are complete, so they're looking into why ten of those weren't completed, maybe we can go back and get the rest of that information, or is there something in the way the survey is written where folks don't feel comfortable completing the rest of the survey, so looking at addressing some of those, some of those questions. Oh, I should say, I was, the sources of strength is being looked at for Morehead Public Schools as well, it's not just DGF, so. I'm sure Commissioner Ebbinger can correct any of my notes, or anything that I missed from that, he was a part of that meeting as well. That evening, I also attended the MetroCog Policy Board on behalf of Commissioner Mojo, who was not available for that. And let me pull up that real quick. For Clay County's purposes, the bulk of what we would need to know about that meeting is, we approved the performance measures, and we went with the state-specific safety performance targets again, so this is pretty much been what they've done since twenty-eighteen, they're looking at Minnesota state safety performance targets on the Minnesota side, North Dakota state safety targets on the other side, there was some discussion about why we don't use local safety targets, and the, the staff with MetroCog really felt that using the state standards, because it's a wider data pool, helps us to avoid any big fluctuation in what those targets may be, so if we were looking at just our metro area, if we have a couple big accidents, that really changes what the data looks like, and so to help us meet those safety standards and have a more consistent data pool, that using the state standards is really beneficial. We also looked at, West Fargo did a traffic study calming report, and they looked at different methods of traffic calming, so this would be using landscaping, or roundabouts, or burrums, to try to get folks to drop the slow, drop their speed down naturally, and they looked, they had this really interesting chart to look at the effectiveness of some of these different styles, there was also a discussion on snow removal, and how, for example, roundabouts, while they may be very effective in getting folks to slow down, can be difficult for snow removal, so there is no one recommended traffic calming method, different things work better in different areas, but it was a really interesting study to look at. There were a couple public hearings, there was no comment, that was just to adopt the Transportation Improvement Program Amendment, so no comments on that. And I think that concludes my reports, thank you.
Thank you. On Tuesday, February fifteenth, we had a diversion executive meeting, some key dates and things to be aware of, I know that some of you may be asked about certain things, before we get into those dates, we got an updates on, on, they have been holding workshops on quality management, deals with the project, as you know, when you get a three-billion-dollar project, there's a lot of management that has to go on, they did, we anticipated at the time of last week that the, the notice to proceed number one was gonna be done within the next week, so I'm assuming that that might even be done as we speak, and what that does is that kicks off the design of the channel project, starting on the north end. Now, when you say, well, what do you mean, they're just designing this, well, it's been ongoing, but this is the formal deal, and then the notice proceed number two, which is actually scheduled for around April twenty-second, and that's the actual one to begin construction, so by the April twenty-second, we will be looking at, at authorization to start the construction. Excavation is anticipated to start on the north end this fall, is the way they work the diversion channel, they work from where it enters first, and they work backwards towards, so, so they'll be working from the north to the south. The entire channel, they're anticipating to be dug by twenty-twenty-five. That does not mean it'll be operational, but that'll be dug, there's still many, there's all the bridges and everything else that come into play that are involved with that. Another topic that we had, there was the issue of parks amenities is coming back up again, because of the most recent federal legislation, there's a lot of dollars that are involved, and I know early on in my, in my being involved with diversion, there was the potential for up to fifty million dollars being spent on, on amenities for that project, whether it's bike paths, or what have you, that might be going through along the diver, the entire diversion channel, fishing areas, at certain times, who knows, but, and that was removed from the scope of the project, and now it's being talked about again, as funding appears to be available, and, and so we're working, Jenna, Commissioner Kaylee, you'll probably be aware of it, if you're part of that, you just reported on MetroCog, that MetroCog, we might be looking for them to, to handle that, that project moving forward, and it, it's something that has to be, in addition to the scope of what the P-three contract calls for, one of the things that is still important is, if there's parks done, how do you maintain it in the future, and that currently is not discussed as part of the P-three contract, so. So there's a lot of things going on there. Then on, on Thursday morning, I had two meetings, the first one I'll talk about is the, we had a transportation hauling discussion, and this goes back to, and this is regarding transportation for, going from Purim for the region, or for the Prairie Lake Solid Waste, if you recall, there was a recommendation from our solid waste advisor to, to purchase two new and refurbish one truck, and at the time, I had suggested that we hold off and do one, because we wanted to do this study regarding the, the deadheading, to see if we could solve that problem, it's been a big issue that the Prairie Lakes Board has talked about and trying to redo. After finally getting all the numbers, I say finally, the opportunity was had, and I wanna thank Brett from the landfill, and Todd from the City of Morehead, and Kirk, and Brian from Purim, the numbers came in, and they're not what I was hoping for, we're, they, the additional hauling costs to do that, not even counting some additional, what I would refer to would be labor costs, are about an additional forty-eight thousand dollars per year to, to do what we were hoping to do. So as much as you'd like to solve the problem, and some people may ask, well, why are you running trucks empty one way when you're, when you're taking stuff there both directions all the time, the, the physical plant that is in Purim doesn't allow for certain types of loaded trailers, and so it just, it's not going to work, and as much as we'd like it to, it's not going to work, so I did, you know, I was the one who was discouraged us from buying the two right away, but I did talk to Kirk, and I asked him to get ahold of the vendor, to see about getting that additional trailer, see if we could get it added, I think we're looking at a September date right now to have them, which is far before we would need them anyway, but, and I think, so I believe Kirk is gonna be coming to our board next week to formally change what we did, and I'll certainly support that, but I'm disappointed that the numbers didn't work out, I would have liked to have seen us be able to do that, but it's just not gonna work, financially. That, later that morning, we had, we also had a, a dispatch meeting at the Kess County Courthouse with a number of players, and this one was more regarding the future joint powers agreement, how it would look, I think, and I'll, I'll kinda defer a lot of this report to Commissioner Ebbinger, but I, I'm really encouraged as to all of our, all of our partners on this seem to be on the same page, in terms of where we need to go, we're gonna have a governing board, which would represent a voting structure of six from North Dakota and four from Minnesota, with the ability to have some things that would require a Minnesota vote, so that we're protected, that's something that we've insisted upon, but outside of that, all of the underlying operations, we as elected people need to stay out of the, stay out of our, that lane, and let, let those people who are dealing with it, deal with it, and so I think it's moving along in a really good direction. Then on, on Friday, we did have a, a Then on Friday, we did have a, because of the holiday yesterday, we did meet regarding the transfer station project, or the, yeah, the transportation project itself, and all seems to be going fairly well, other than the fact that they're virtually getting nothing done right now because of the weather, so. But I, I mean, no news is good news too, I guess, other than the fact that I, I wouldn't be surprised if we're going to end up seeing some delays in that, in that date where we were hoping this thing would be done, which is October. And then Friday afternoon, I did get the opportunity to go over to the Law Enforcement Center. Our Deputy Scott Stefis had retired after 31 years, so I went over there. I've known Scott for a long time, and I was able to be there for a little presentation for him. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thursday, the 17th, I, I virtually attended the Clay County Substance Abuse and Suicide Prevention Meeting. Commissioner Kaylee has done a good job describing it, so I won't drag that out any further. Also, later that day, went to Clay County Courthouse with Mr. Campbell, and we are working, making good progress on Red River Regional Dispatch Centers Joint Powers Agreement. The governmental entities seem to be coalesced around what I think was the initial thing we went forward with early in the year, which was we needed to have fiscal oversight by elected officials, as opposed to the current Board of Authority, which is police chiefs, fire chiefs, and the sheriffs submitting basically incom- completed budget and saying, okay, here's what you owe. There needed to be some elected officials who are part of the various entities budgeting process who keep the oversight on the finance. Other than that, although a lot of elected officials will tell you we're experts in everything, in every panel we sit on, there's already been a Board of Authority for the last 22 years on the dispatch center comprised of police chiefs, fire chiefs, and sheriffs who have years of experience, training, education in how that dispatch center needs to operate. And there's a director over there who's got years of experience and expertise, and we need to stay out of their way. So we're trying to construct a joint powers agreement where we maintain the integrity for operational purposes of that current Board of Authority, but we bring in the elected officials to have fiscal oversight. And I think we're moving in that direction. The, the two attorneys that are working on this asked for a month. We have a pretty sizable joint powers agreement right now, about 65 pages. I think we can do it in less than half of that. They're going to do some serious trimming of some of the extra verbiage in that document that I think only adds to making things a little more complicated where they don't need to be. But great meeting, and it's, I think everybody, all the entities are working well together on this. I will be meeting this week with the architects and get an idea of what, what's going on there, as far as size of the facility, capacity, and cost. And so it's moving ahead well. And later, or that evening, I attended the Executive Committee meeting for the Lake Agassiz Regional Library Board. Good meeting. Had the usual business financial report and approval of agendas and all that. We got into the director's report, a couple of things I'd like to make you aware of came up, particularly in line of the fact we're going to be talking to our legislative people next week. Senate File 1131, House File 1710 is coming back, being reviewed by the legislature. What it does is it enhances the basic library system support that comes from the state of Minnesota to the libraries, the 365 public libraries in the state of Minnesota that currently get $13 million of state funding. So it spreads pretty thin. With the current structured formula on this, a disproportionate share of that goes to metro libraries, and outstate libraries get what's left over. We're asking $2 million increase in basic library system support funding, and that's going to give a chance to stabilize formula so that outstate libraries get at least a reasonable share of that funding. All the things we talk about, and everything from the diversion to rural counties, are impacted by our libraries. In many, many parts of this state, they are the access points for a lot of people to get on the internet. You know, it's a, it's a critical issue in job force. There's a lot of people out there seeking employment who would make good employees in jobs that we desperately need them at, but the only access point on that is to get online and do an application, or look for a job. And in many cases, the only access people have is going to their local library. There's just a number of things that we look at. It impacts on seniors. There's a lot, a lot of lifelong learning programs that come through the libraries, particularly out in the, in the rural areas. Broadband is an issue in rural areas. Libraries manage the structure so people can have internet access across the state. So I really want us to stress to our legislators, and get our cohorts from other counties, talk to theirs, that this is something that should pass. It didn't get a vote in the last legislative session, and everybody thought it was going to be a fairly easy pass. Everybody's assuring us now that it's going to pass. We need to follow through and let them know it's being watched, and that we want to see this happen. Just on our local library issue, another thing we got to get a look at and hear about is the fact that the ceiling there is leaking. And they've had to move hundreds of books to get them out from underneath a damaged ceiling that can't be fixed until spring, and before that happens, the snow on the flat roof is going to melt, and the leak is going to get worse. So, you know, just as, as a little example of how desperate funding is for libraries, our own Morehead Library is kind of coming down around our ears. There's efforts being made to get funding for a new library, but I think it's something that I hope the public's aware of, as it's, it's a needed entity, and it provides a lot of services to our community. Another thing we discussed was the security up there at the Morehead Library, and we passed a motion to hire a private uniformed security guard to work in the dark hours that the libraries open. We'll cut that back in the summer, but there's been many, many incidents of problems up there with folks that are under the influence or have mental health issues. When I went up there for a meeting two weeks ago, there was an issue in the parking lot that I reluctantly got a little bit involved with, just with Morehead Police responding, and folks being inside and outside that needed their attention. So that's something we hope that will benefit the patrons and the employees up there. We also passed a contract with the regional library and the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees for 2022 through 2024, contract for those union employees. And that completes my report.
Yeah. The only meeting I had was Shaq. And I'll try and be nice on this one. I've always got some, I mean, comments that I probably shouldn't make sometimes, but I had a good meeting there. It was, they were talking about jobs, getting people into jobs, and it's not, it's not just getting people into the jobs, but once you get them there, you got to train them. You know, the people applying for the jobs aren't, may not fit the job that you're, you're trying to hire for, then there's a lot more training involved in some of these people that you do hire. And Chan Malcolm, the commissioner, she talked about COVID cases dropping. For the last four weeks, they've been dropping about 40% each week, she's saying. She made one comment that I thought was sort of interesting. She says, if anybody thinks that they know what's going to happen with COVID-19, they don't know what they're talking about. So I thought that was, that was interesting. But just thinking about, I mean, people don't know what's going to happen with COVID-19. You know, we probably say, oh, the numbers are coming down, it's all going good, and stuff like that, but no one's really sure what's going to happen with this COVID-19. Lots of openings in public health, and I think public health has done, as they made, over the next three years, they made $1 billion in requests to the legislators, and hopefully they'll get some of that. The rest of it was just mostly an overview of what public health, with how it's being delivered to the public, and how it's going on. That's it. My report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was out last week, and I appreciate the board allowing some time off to look at other white things.
You didn't bring anything back that was good either.
I did just want to touch base on a couple items I didn't, wasn't able to report on the week before, that hasn't been covered by U.S. Commissioners already. We had management on the ninth. We continue to meet twice a month as a full management team to talk about certain issues and keep everyone up to date on, on COVID. We also heard from Rory Schmitz, HR, provided an update, and also talked about our work group today. I did participate, the Red River Regional Dispatch Board of Authority meeting. Sheriff Amtin was again elected for his third term as the, as the chair of the committee. We heard a little bit of facility update information. There's a New World software update coming, and, and Mary Philippi reported that it's not completely done, but they utilized about 95% of their budget in 2021. I talked with Sheriff Amtin and James O'Donnell on the mend contract. We were having some additional discussions today after this at PIC. I talked with both Troy and Kathy, and also Joe Olson in regards to their, their presentations for the work group this week. I had multiple department head up our evaluations, and I also met with Darren and Brian Melton on a series of related issues. Just a reminder to, to the public, we are having a community engagement meeting on our comprehensive and transportation plan, be held in this room this evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., as of right now, weather, weather permitting. And so with that, that's all I have.
Hey, Brian?
Commissioner Olson, if I could, I think, I know we've had a lot of discussion about use of force statute that's come out. I'm not sure if Commissioner Ebbinger, or if we had much update, but we did have some resolution. There was a lawsuit that went forward from the Chiefs of Police and the Minnesota Sheriff's Department. They had filed an argument, arguing that the, the change in the use of force statute was unconstitutional. That, that lawsuit has now moved through the courts. There was an ultimate outcome of that, that said the portion that's been problematic, requiring officers to provide information against themselves, basically testify against themselves, could be excised out of the statute, thus making the, so they, instead of just declaring it completely unconstitutional, they were able to excise the problematic portion and continue to have the statute move forward, at least up to this point right now. I don't believe the Attorney General's Office for Minnesota is appealing that. So I think that that is the, the law of the land. We are now meeting with our North Dakota counterparts. I think it's very encouraging. We're working on just finding the right time. We can do some training with them to make sure they understand what the new law is and how it is compatible with North Dakota law, and I think we'll get back to finding mutual use between communities here in a short period of time here. So I just thought I'd mention that to the board. I don't think we've talked about that. We haven't really had any meetings in regard to it, but we're planning some upcoming, so I think it's very encouraging.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I was aware of that. I wasn't sure the details or what the timeline looked like, but it is good news. We'll get mutual aid back coming across the river, both ways between the agencies here. Again, as, as elected officials, we need to be vigilant on what's, what's in, in front of the legislature, because this has presented a real hazard to our community for almost a year now. And when these things get by, and this kind of got over, under everybody's radar, it, it can be problematic. The Chief's Association, the Sheriff's Association did a good job on this. I'm grateful they, they led the charge.
That's all I have on this. I'm coming.
No, I, I guess I agree with that. I think it's good news. It's, I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that it can all be resolved, and we can go back to where we're working with mutual aid when it comes to that. I did have another, just a comment for Steve. We're meeting next Tuesday, and then we're taking off for the legislative conferences after that. And based on, I think it was some of the things that Commissioner Ebbinger mentioned, that maybe some notes that we can have based on different things important to Clay County, maybe, maybe, Steve, if we could have some sort of a list of things that, that we should have on our hands. Sometimes when you get there, you, you might forget certain things. I think of the, you know, it's Clay County's responsibility, along with the City of Moriah, to also be working with the state legislature on the $83 million Minnesota cost for the diversion project. We've, we've agreed that we would, we would be before the state in regards to those issues. So with the amount of money that they have in their excess funds now, it might be an appropriate time to try to get some commitment from the state on that. There's the SCORE issue, the SCORE funding issue, but I just think maybe if you could provide us with, with some of those, a list of those issues that are important for us that may be actively, actively being done in the current legislative session, that would be, be helpful. Thank you.
Colleen, you got any words of wisdom for us? Darren, you okay too? Very good. We're adjourned.